We will start with the pledge of allegiance. I had intended to announce this before, and I apologize, but I did want to suggest a moment of silence for Mr. Raymond Jones. We mentioned this at our last meeting. Our police chief's father has passed away, but what I did not know is that he actually served the town as one of our animal control officers, so I might ask for just a brief moment of silence if we could stand again. Thank you. Madam Kirk?
Counselor Elton?
Present.
Counselor Demidiris?
Present.
Counselor Katz?
Present.
Counselor Coulter?
Present.
Counselor Cook?
Present.
Counselor Drix?
Present.
Counselor Perry is absent.
Okay. We will start with the consent agenda. We have four categories of items. Our first category is approval of town council minutes. We have the March 25th regular and executive session, April 1st regular. We acknowledge receipt of minutes, two sets from the budget committee and one from the tree committee, tree commission. We also acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's March monthly budget and revenue report, and various other correspondence. We have Mr. Sandy Ox, marketing and communications director, Newport Mental Health. We're going to take that off of the agenda and read the proclamation here shortly. The Pawtucket School Committee to amend Article 12 resolution, the Town of Westerly Resolution in Support of an Amendment to Rhode Island General Law Chapter 23-17-26 entitled Comprehensive Discharge Planning, our tax assessor, the notice of proposed property tax rate change to be voted on May 18th at our Financial Town referendum, Newport County YMCA Adaptive Physical Activity and Special Olympics Team fundraiser, that is the Newport County APA Golf Tournament Event on Monday, June 10th at Montop Country Club in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and finally, the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, Sakonat River Bridge Recision of the 2013 Record of Decision. I will remove item D1. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'm not sure if it's necessary to remove. I just wanted to confirm that in my packet I had the minutes for the, or may on a 25th regular session and then the April 1st executive session. Is that, did I just?
Yeah.
Well, no, the agenda says March 25th regular, March 25th executive, and April 1st regular. Okay.
Rob, oh, sorry. I just want a point of order that our consent agenda items are removed separate considerations as per our new policy.
Yes.
And that would be at the end of the meeting, as you made sure we voted for?
Yes, and I will ask for a separate motion to take that back out of order once we get through the--
So will we be doing that with other items that some of the counselors want to consider?
We have a guest here, so because we have a guest here, I want to extend that courtesy to our guest who's going to ask us, who I will ask to read the proclamation.
Okay.
Hearing none, may I have a motion?
So which, I mean, should we accept meetings at minutes if we don't have them, or do I, am I the only one missing them?
I'm sorry, you're missing the April 1st regular?
April 1st regular and March 25th executive.
That's, you have the March 25th regular, and that April 1st is executive.
Yes.
Right.
So you're going to have to, you're going to have to remove A and vote.
Just take off all of A? All right, just take off all of A. All right, very well. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve B, C, and D 2 through 6.
Some more.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, very well. May I have a motion to take item D1 out of order to proceed immediately to it, so that our guest might read the proclamation for our consideration?
Some more.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Very well. Would it be the pleasure of the council to vote to approve it now, or have the proclamation read first?
We just approved it.
We just approved it, take it out of order, but we didn't approve the actual. Why don't we take a motion to approve it, since I know we've all read it?
All right, so moved.
And a second, please? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, the floor is yours.
I'm Edwin Schober. I'm sitting in for Sandy Ox. I'm representing Newport Mental Health, and May is Mental Health Month, so I just have this short proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and with effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas businesses, schools, government agencies, healthcare providers, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and have a responsibility to promote mental health wellness, treatment and support, prevention, and mental health first aid efforts. Thank you, and I'm also a member of the town, too, so thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along to public presentations, announcements, and comments. We have two pre-scheduled public presentations, and as is our new practice, because there is no executive session tonight, we also have a general open public forum. First, we have Ms. Renee Jones from the Economic Development Commission, and I believe Ashley Maderos from the Newport County Chamber of Commerce, to discuss a purpose of the proposed May 7th business walk. If you'd be more comfortable seated, we actually have chairs tonight, so whatever, whatever. Over to you.
Thank you. Never know how to talk into these things. There's actually two things I wanted to speak about this evening, and I promise I'll be brief. During the budget process last year, the EDC had requested $1,800. $800 was for our yearly expenses, and $1,000 was to be used by the town as matching funds for a program that we called, that was called Lean, and it was run by Rhode Island Commerce Department. The Lean program provides a consultant to the town, who with town department staff, reviews and streamlines a chosen procedure. One of the ongoing concerns at EDC, we have heard expressed by business in town, is that the permitting process is inefficient, requiring multiple visits to Town Hall for approval from different departments, where people may or may not be available due to schedules. When the budget was approved, our understanding was that the $1,000 would somehow be earmarked so it could be used when the program was started, and this was to be a critical first step, so that we could then come up with a pamphlet that would be handed out to anyone coming to Town Hall looking to start a business, and it could also be used by the EDC on its website. Unfortunately, somehow, it was never earmarked, and all, according to Treasurer Soret, all that's in the EDC account was the $800, and we don't know where the $1,000 has disappeared, or is, is, it's not earmarked, isn't the point. We are going to go ahead with the pamphlet, and in fact, are doing that right now. We have some, a rough draft that we're working on, and we've gone to the town members, different town departments, and asked them to review what we have, to see if it makes sense. It would have been more, I think it would have been better had we done this more officially, but we're going to do it anyway, and hopefully, what I'm here for is to ask that at some point, this town council see, and I know you're in the middle of this crazy budget process, I understand all of that, but at some point, I think I will be coming back to ask for money to do this program, because I really think it's beneficial to the town. We have a reputation of not being business-friendly, and that's one of the aspects, one of the reasons that it is considered that. I've been in touch with Liz Tanner, who's been wonderful at the Department of Business Regulation, and she's, you know, she has sent me, given me names of the people that are now running the program, so whenever we can find the money, they're set to go. And I'm just putting my bid in for that, because I'll be back.
So how much will you--
It's $1,000. But then, the reason that was actually on the agenda, so I did cheat a little bit--
Could I interrupt for just a brief second?
Sure.
You have a lot left over in your budget right now, you know that, right? You have over $700.
Right, and that's going to be the cost for the pamphlet to be printed.
Okay.
So that's--
So you need an additional $1,000?
Well, once that budget, once the, is printed, the program has to, is $1,000 for a matching fund to go to the state. So the $800 is the money that we will be using for the printing of the current pamphlet. Then, if we want to do the process of reviewing it, it is another $1,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and actually, that dovetails really nicely, because we have the e-permitting now, and so it all just kind of fits together, if we could pull it together. Okay, the second reason for me being here is to briefly speak about the business walk program that is being sponsored by the Newport Chamber of Commerce. The chamber and its representatives have been absolutely invaluable to the EDC, and in fact, funded a business mailing for us over 100 businesses in North Tiverton. This mailing was helpful in letting people know that the town, in fact, does have an Economic Development Commission. That's one of the things that I've been finding also, that it's just not a very well-known commission. And so we've been sort of trying to get a groundswell, having, introducing ourselves and talking to businesses, and that's where this dovetails really nicely. This business walk will be the first time that Tiverton has participated, along with greater Newport communities such as Newport, Bristol, and Warren, and I am going to now introduce Ashley Maderos, who is from the chamber, who will describe for you in detail what the goals are and what we've been doing.
Hello, thanks for letting me speak for a few minutes. So Connect Greater Newport is a regional economic development initiative. Seven of the nine municipalities in Newport and Bristol counties have participated to get this up and running. It was originally developed to address some of our region's barriers to economic growth and stability, including an aging workforce, a declining population, slower lagging industries, and the high cost of housing. And so we're working together, and what I do specifically is a lot of business outreach. So I talk to our businesses and say, what is going well, and what can we help you with, to make sure that you retain or sustain in our region, as they are the cornerstone to our economic stability. And the one thing that I have learned is that sometimes they don't feel supported in communities, and a lot of different communities across the country do something called a business walk, and it's a way to bring community leaders to the business community, so that you can hear their feedback, and to hear their concerns, and help address them, and then they, you build that relationship, which is nice for both parties. And so it is on May 7th. It is very quick, so it's only a half day. Our goal here in Tiverton is only about 10 businesses. If we could do more, that would be great, but three or four people will go to each business and ask a handful of questions that will be predetermined, and it's just a 15-minute stop. And it's really just putting a face to a name and saying, hi, we're your, you know, we're your council, we're here to help, you know, and kind of getting to know and hear what the challenges are.
I know, I think we're meeting at Longplex.
We're going, we're, that's what our goal is, to hopefully meet there and be able to get a tour of that facility, being the newest in this town, and then we'll, it'll be very, the business will sign up, so they'll know that you're coming, won't just be popping in, and so, you're, hi, we're here.
And actually, the reason that we felt really important, that this was really important is that I personally, and I'll speak for myself, feel that we need to be more proactive. I think Tiverton is always reactive. We wait until something happens and then deal with it, instead of sort of taking the reins and figuring out what we really want in town. So it's a way to open communication between the business community and the town that will facilitate the kind of smart growth that would diversify the tax base and keep the quality of life we've come to appreciate in Tiverton. So this is just a very, very beginning step to get going. So, that's it.
I did get your email, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, because I'm not a techie, so I was like, really pleased that that went through. Thank you very much.
So May 7th, and the rendezvous time is--
It'll be 8:00 a.m., and hopefully, Longplex, but we can--
Longplex, I think we're meeting, I, he said he, I think we're meeting at Longplex.
Yes.
Okay. Bring your own coffee, or you're going to have--
We will have coffee.
Bar and milk?
Yes, of course. We always have coffee.
Put that in the budget.
Right, and if, no, no, that will be on us, but if there is a registration online, and we, so we can email that out, just so we know who's coming and see, match the groups together, and so we're consistent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're still on part five. Our next public presentation is Mr. Brian Daniels from the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, and this is a brief presentation on how the league operates and services, and services that it can provide to the town. Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Daniels is actually not here, and not going to be here. We spoke briefly earlier today. Yeah, you did, thank you. He had wanted to speak to the council, explaining what services the league has been providing, but it was, he, he understood from one of the members of the council that it might be better to do it at a later date, given that things are already sort of handled in the budget process and unlikely to change. Plus, he's pretty busy at the State House, so he didn't think it was worth it to, you know, spend time now, which I personally think is too bad, but yes, he'll be glad to come back at a convenient time.
Okay. All right, we will skip 5B to be rescheduled at a later date. That brings us to our general open public forum. We've had one person sign up this week, Ms. Kelly Leveque. The walkathon announcement. Kelly?
Hi, everyone. As you may or may not know, in order to graduate from Tiverton High School, all seniors must complete a year-long research project of their choosing that is approved by faculty and administration. I'm here to announce that Ms. Amber Fitzgerald's senior project is coming up on Saturday, May 4th. It's a run-walk for melanoma cancer. It's being held at the high school track, and she'd like to help make a difference for cancer patients and their families. There is no set donation in order to participate, but you can collect donations if you would like. She is selling bracelets, which say, "Get Your Spots Checked," for $2, and she also has t-shirts, which are $10, and they'll be available the day of the event. If you'd like to make a donation, you can bring it with you on the day of the event, or you can see Jeannie in the town clerk's office, and she'll take the donation for you. Thank you. It is Saturday, May 4th. Registration, I'm sorry, I missed that line. Registration's at 8:30, and the walk steps off at 9 o'clock. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, proceeding on to our public hearings, we have an advertised public hearing. Ms. Carol Sukuchi, apologize for the pronunciation, requesting an approval of sound variance for wedding. This is another wedding, it must be the season, to be held on family's property, that's at Two Highland Road, June 8th, 2019, from 4:30 to 10:30 p.m., and also a related non-advertised special event permit, as always, subject to meeting all legal requirements. This is a public hearing, does anybody wish to be, are you the, would you like to, are you the applicant?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
And I'm here if anybody needs me.
Okay, sure. Are there any questions? Would anybody like to be heard on the matter? Okay, any objection to proceeding to a vote? Okay, may I have a motion to approve as requested?
Some more.
Would it be a second? I didn't want to deprive you of the opportunity to tell us how, what a good party it's going to be, so. Very well. All those in favor, as requested?
Thank you so much.
Do we have to vote on both of those separately, or can we vote on, there are two things, right, a sound variance, and do we have to have two votes, Nancy?
Yeah, the, 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 the special event permit.
So it's just a sound variance?
Yeah.
Okay.
You sure? I want voice count compliance. Okay, we have more public, okay, so this public--
We don't want any squeaky wheels.
That's right. On this public hearing, so it is a public hearing, because we've advertised it as such, but my understanding is that we will not be voting on any changes to, to the, to the fees for the planning board, since it is on the agenda, though let's at least tee it up. Is our planning board chair here? Susan Gill, requesting approval of adoption of the planning board fee schedule and consultant escrow schedule for 2019-20, recommended by the planning board, and I just want to make sure we have the procedure right. Your suggestion is, we, we can talk about it, so maybe you want to hold for the actual vote till a later meeting?
Each department doesn't normally come forward, but the town administrator will go through all his departments, there's a fee and fine resolution, and there's an annual review of it, and then any department that has a request to change any fees, fines, will all come forward at the same time. I want to say you put that towards the last meeting in May.
We do.
Because that has to be advertised.
Yep.
I think we might have been carrying it, I might have carried it in there, because it's on the, I thought we said the end of May.
So why is this here today?
Right.
Well, you want to at least introduce the topic, and--
Well, yeah, Susan Gill, planning board. Yeah, I just wasn't even sure if it was allowed to be discussed, if it hadn't been advertised, but I didn't know if you just wanted the information for your packet. Every year, we go through our application fees, and, and also the escrow, kind of like the baseline that we ask for the consultant engineering review. So we just, we did a couple of adjustments. The other thing I included in your packet was the backup, I did some research on what other communities' approximate size, what their fee structures are, just to have comparison, to kind of give you an idea of the range that we work with.
So this is recommended?
Yeah, we, we reviewed this, and the planning board voted on it to recommend it, to bring it forward, so then it comes to you for review and approval.
Do we have to do them all at once, or we did advertise these separately?
It has to be, it has to be double carrying.
All right, so the problem is, we haven't actually advertised it. Okay, so I'm thinking, can we have a motion added to this agenda for discussion purposes only, or are you--
We don't need to do anything.
--on here, or you think we're okay with that?
I don't, I didn't follow the question.
Well, the agenda has the word advertised here.
What are you looking at, Rob?
Oh, you're just concerned that the heading is incorrect?
Well, it's other public--
Just in case we have another open meeting issue.
It says other public hearings, so it doesn't say that it's advertised.
That's true.
Yeah, we're on the second.
That's true.
Yeah, we're on the second, we're on the seventh.
Oh, we're beautiful, all right, beautiful.
That's an issue.
And to your prior question, you can do multiple resolutions for fees. You don't have to take them all together, but I think--
Voice count. Is that it?
Yeah, so I didn't know if the, the discussion will come later.
Well, is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this, knowing we will not vote on it, but if you came here to talk about it, let's, would anybody like to be heard?
Well, I just, I had a general question, having this in the packet for Susan. In general, what's the guiding principle for deciding if a fee needs to go up or down?
Basically, how many hours are put into it? Like, the town's not allowed to make profit, basically, off the application fees, so we kind of look at, kind of calculating maybe how many hours it takes from the time the applicant submits an application, for the initial review, for the planning board, for decisions to be written, for things to be filed, if we have to use zoning or DPW, anybody else that consults fire department, that's all town, you know, calculated into it, so it's, it's kind of a ballpark. I mean, but we don't, we don't, you know, try and put exorbitant fees on them to make a profit, and we don't. We clearly don't.
If somebody comes in with a minor subdivision preliminary plan with no new road--
Right.
It is currently $200, and this consensus of the board was, it takes a little longer than that--
Yeah, it really varies. Like, minor subdivisions can be done in two meetings, or sometimes it takes five meetings, sometimes it takes most, you know, more input from DPW or the fire department, so there is more variation, but in general, it seems to take more time, and the time to write decisions, to get those recorded, and, you know, just all the paperwork, the filing, I mean, it takes into account the clerk, you know, the planner, the administrative officer, you know, zoning, kind of all the town services that are provided in order to process an application, so.
And is this just a one-time fee?
Right, when they submit the application for each stage, that's the fee they pay, so it's whether it's one meeting or 10 meetings--
Okay.
That fee kind of, you know--
Because I know some of them were high compared to neighboring communities, but it would not be enough to deter somebody from coming here, as opposed to--
Well, they want to bill, that's the cost of doing business, in a way. The solar one was the only one, I didn't have anything to go on, so we kind of thought of, like, kind of going through the process, and that's still kind of learning how many hours it's taking to process an application, to go through the hearings, and all the paperwork and time that's put into it, so that was kind of an estimate.
So we didn't advertise it, but it's posted as a public hearing? Last chance, anybody like to be heard on the matter? Questions or comments from counselors? Okay, so we will continue on in the agenda, and we will bring this back after a full advertising. Okay. Our next public hearing is from Mr. Michael Roderick. This is a request to hold the Courtney Roderick Run for Recovery. This is a road run, a 5K event, to be held on July 20th, 2019, start and finish on, right around the corner, on Loughton Avenue, near Fort Barton School, and there will be a registration and award ceremony at Grinnell's Beach, and we do have a rain date of, would just be the next day, on July 21st. This is a public hearing, would anybody like to be heard on the matter?
Can Mr. Roderick talk about it?
Sure, would you like to give us a little introduction, maybe a little publicity for the event?
All right, so this is our, I don't even know if I need to, so this is our second annual Courtney Roderick Run for Recovery. The first one, we established, our daughter passed away in October of 2016 from opiate, from fentanyl, it was actually fentanyl, but we decided we wanted to do something like that. Last year, we held it, the same date. The reason we did it is it was close to her birthday, and we had 110 runners or so. We're using the same route this year. The parking, we didn't bother Grinnell's Beach at all, we had parking laid out. We went to the school, we're going to do the same thing this year, to use Fort Barton School parking lot, to use the medical area, medical business parking lot, and then back, not back, Eddie, Red Dory parking lot, and we had 110 runners, we didn't even use Fort Barton at all. So this year, our goal is to double it. We raised $10,000 last year, and we gave it to Eastman House, and we're a 501(c)(1) organization, so our goal is to double it. We don't foresee impinging on parking in the Grinnell's Beach area. We already met with the recreation committee, they wanted us to move, the difference from last year to this year, with the, with the new beach opening, there'll probably be a lot more interest, and people going to the beach, by July, I'm hoping the novelties worn off, but up on, we agreed to move the start, stop, the start-finish to the Town Hall location, so it'll take, you know, there won't be as much congregation. Last year, we had all our tables set up along the grass here, because the beach wasn't open yet, so that wasn't much of a problem, but this year, with the beach opening up, we're moving everything up, up here. We talked, somebody was at our meeting, the recreation committee meeting, and they said they would open up the restrooms here for the, if that's not possible, we can provide the portage. That was thrown up there. I don't know what the man's name was. He works up here, go ahead.
Mr. Counselor Perry.
I'm just worried about the septic.
Yeah, I personally didn't think it was a good idea, for several reasons, actually, and I think if necessary, we can have some porta-potties out there.
I mean, I welcome the offer, if not, we provide--
No, I think it's a great event, I'm just worried about the septic system, which is barely functioning.
And it's also, if you do it for one thing, then, you know--
So we'll provide the portage on it. I believe that, so the way we're going to do it is have the registration, the check-in tables down along the pavilion there, at the beach. They check in, and then they can walk up the hill here to the start, start and finish line.
I spoke earlier with Mr. Roderick and explained that, as he already knew from the meeting with the recommission, that there was concern about, you know, having a crowd at the beach in the middle of the summer on a Saturday, and whether it was necessary to have the registration at the pavilion there, and, you know, I know that people who have concerns about that, whether it can be done at the same location as where the start is. The award ceremony is, I don't think, a big concern, but--
I think, I mean, as far as the people checking in, it won't be, everyone's not going to come there once, they'll, they'll check in, and then they'll go up to the start line. I mean, I like the locations, like, you know, and not only that, on our sign, we did put Grinnell's Beach, so if we could at least, you know, set up the tables so they could check in there and then walk up, walk up here to the start, we'd like to do that.
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So I have to admit, because I was a little thrown by the application--
Yeah.
Because the, the date stamp on the applications and the permit from the--
Because the, the date stamp on the applications and the permit from the state and all that, that's all.
Yeah, it's a long time.
It's all from July of 2018?
Yeah, I started the process, okay, so I went through the whole planning thing for the first run, okay? And now, I've got to tell you something, okay? It took me all that time to go from getting the, to get in the paper in that office, to getting the police chief to sign it, to getting the DOT to sign it, to getting the recreation committee, which I did not get done until the end of March. And, and to have a run, okay, I can't, I couldn't start doing this now, there's no way.
So you started this July?
Yeah, and I'm going to do the same thing against this year unless you guys, somebody can. But it takes a long time. I have expenses I got to do, I got to advertise the thing. So I can't, I can't wait three months out to do an event like this, there's no way. And we're doing a good thing. The, if you, if you folks don't know, 50,000, more than 50,000 people have died from opioid, more than the Vietnam War, okay? And until this thing goes away, it's still a problem. And, and I believe we're doing a really good thing, a really good, it's a really good cause. And we're a 501(c)(1), you can go to our website. I remember, I told, this is my, I told, I told Kim we should bring in the poster and a couple of things. We just, it was a long day today. But I encourage everyone here to check out the website. And we've done a lot of work on it and we want to continue to do a good work. But we can't just get the, I couldn't come in here tonight and get that paper done and stop planning this, there's, there's no way.
What's the website?
The Courtney.
It's, yeah, it's courtneyroderick5k.com. I got some cards here, I can.
So registration will be down there and then they'll come up here?
Yep.
Okay.
So. So.
I'd like to.
I, I think this is a great event and I'm all for it, but I just want to make sure before we vote on this that we understand. So have you spoken with the school about using Fort Barton?
So I, look, as far as, last year we had to, I did a formal thing, you know, I was, I mean, I want to get this through first and then I'll go to the school department, just like I did last year. And I did a, there was a one-piece thing.
Use of facility.
Use of, right, and it's off-season, so it was no big deal. But I will do that.
You'll do that.
I'll do that, and last year I got, what do you call it, the insurance. I had an insurance policy I paid for, it's $300 to cover the town.
And, and, you know, we can't authorize obviously for you to park on private property, so I'm guessing your arrangements with the businesses, that's a separate, like. That's a, that's a separate.
I was on this website.
That's a separate thing.
Yeah.
So the only, the only concern that I'm, that I'm going to raise, given that you might have 200 people.
That's our goal.
That's your goal, but that you might have 200 people running.
So it's a run-walk.
Run-walk. So if you have 200 people running, then you might have some more people who are family or friends who come to support them?
You mean, like spectators or?
Well, you know, I mean, somebody might be running and somebody else might just be there to sort of cheer them on, right? They might not be.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not so worried about that. I, I think what my, a little bit of my concern is, is the, is the restroom situation.
Yeah.
Because, and I know that recreation made this clear.
Yeah.
That the restrooms at Grinnell's aren't designed nor, the policy is that they're not set up to handle special events like this. And I am a little worried that if you have people, if you have the registration there, when people get out of the car, that you'll have a lot of people.
So let me, let me just say, so last year, we had 110 runners, walkers. So with that, we have, with people that are, yes, we had a portage on. And that thing, there was nothing overflowing in there. So I'll put, if the, if the concern is, whatever it is, I'll provide, put a portage on up here and I can put one down there, you know. Again, I'm just, you know, there is expenses to do this thing, okay? You know, and I try to minimize my expenses.
I understand that.
Whatever I need to do, I can't go backwards now, I just want to go forward.
Okay.
You know, so if I need to put another portage on down, 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 down the hill, I'll do that, whatever you guys want.
I, I do think it would be, because there's an expense to us too if we have to pump the tank. So that's why it really, and, and the policy of that is that the bathhouses for the beach not, it's not designed to handle outside special events.
Honestly, like you said, I monitored that portage on there, I didn't see anything overflowing there. 110 runners, it looked pretty clean to me.
Well.
And I'm not being cavalier about it, I'm just saying, I tried to take it, the first time. Last year was the first time I did anything like this, this year is the second time. So I definitely learned from my experiences, but I, we didn't have a, you know, it wasn't a problem.
Correct me if I.
How many toilets did it happen at the?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I, you, you aren't planning to use the Grinnell's Beach facilities?
No.
Right.
I mean, we were gonna, I was gonna have to check in there if somebody needed to use it.
But not the facilities, not the bathrooms, yeah.
Well, somebody needed to make a bathroom call while they're checking in, you know, they want it to.
I mean, that's the, 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 the design for that, the plan for that, or the policy with recreation? And they say that in, recreation says this in the letter, is that if you're going to have a special event, Grinnell's, anything other than a town thing, that you need to provide your own, that you need to provide your own bathrooms?
We'll provide the portage on there and one up here.
My house is halfway up the hill on lawn. If you need to stop by my house, it's open.
Okay.
Pioneers can't do the running anymore, so.
How much is the portage on?
We'll drive you around the course if you want to register.
I might walk.
How much are the portages? I'm just curious, I've never rented a.
So we had to.
I think we've got this covered.
So the deal was, yeah, the deal was on the portage on, I had to get it through, it was a weekend.
Oh.
So it was more than I wanted it to be, but I had no choice. And I, I thought it was a few, I'd have to go back in the month.
I'm just curious.
It was a few hundred dollars.
Well. Well. I'm looking at the letter from the recreation commission where they.
I just wanted to know what that expense is.
Stated that you, you know, that, that's part of the policy and that you would need to do that.
Okay, I, I mean, if that's a showstopper, I'll have a portage on there and one here.
I think the sense of the council is one here is enough. They set the registration table down there, but the event's starting up here.
Yeah.
You've done this race before.
Yeah.
I hope you hit your goal, but, you know.
Yeah, just put one up here.
I would just put one up, I, I don't think you need to, but.
Yeah, just one, so.
That's what I think. And what time do you start in the morning?
So, so we, we're going to set up our, well, actually, the big stuff, like, you know, we had some, we have some big, the bigger stuff, we'd like to put out, we put out here the night before, we'll do that, stuff that, and then we'll, we'll congregate our staff. We get a lot of volunteers at around seven, and then we'll have the tables ready to go at eight o'clock to pre-register or check in.
Okay.
And then it starts at nine o'clock.
It starts at nine o'clock.
We kick off at nine. The police, so last year we had four policemen, different places at the force, and we kicked the thing off at nine o'clock.
Okay. Alright, so you're not.
And so the runners will go and then the walkers will go.
Oh, okay. So you'll, you'll actually probably be done at the beach by the time the beach normally, by the time the parking lot opens?
Yeah, yeah, I honestly, I don't, so I, I think, I mean, I think two hours, you know, nine till 11, we'll, we'll be done.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think if you just have one portage on up here, that would probably more than cover it for you.
Okay.
Especially the finishes up here too, right?
Yeah.
Can I, do we need a motion to approve it, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright. I look forward to working with you all, making it successful.
Yeah, since it's already happened last year, maybe there's a way we can somehow accelerate the, you know, kind of the add-in.
That'd be great, that'd be great. I'll work with the town administration, whatever, but that'd be good. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Katz.
Yeah, I'll move to grant permission to hold the Courtney Roderick Run for Recovery.
It's the second annual.
Road run 5K event, oh, second annual, it's not that much. Road run 5K event, July 20th, 2019, starting at nine with registration at eight. Starting and finishing on Lawton Ave near Fort Barton School, registration and award ceremony at Grinnell's Beach, is that correct? Rain date on July 21st, 2019.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, all of us in favor?
Alright, thanks a lot.
Okay, we have appointments and resignations. We have five slots. Each slot has one, has one applicant for one slot. Looks like four of the five are reappointments. What's left? Do you want to do interviews on all of these, uncomfortable, maybe you want to hear from the new applicant? What would you like to see here?
I'd like to make a motion to, to, well, I get, to break our policy and for reappointments, vote on these tonight. And then for the new appointment, interview and appoint next week.
Okay, so the, the motion would be to approve nine A, B, C, and E as indicated, alright? Will there be a second to that motion?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. As, floor is open, any objection, proceeding, or vote? Okay, and I guess just so, just so I probably should state on the record, the motion is to approve the reappointment of John S. Cristo to the Cemetery Commission, that's for a three-year term. Constance Fleckenstein for a three-year term to the Conservation Commission. James L. Spears, the Open Space Commission, that's a three-year term also. And the Tree Commission, is it a commission or a committee?
It's a commission.
It is a commission.
I've always known it as a commission, but.
Usually their letterhead today says committee. I don't know if they sent us, I look because I saw them, it seems strange.
It's always been, yeah, we've always referred to it as a commission. I think in the charter, it's a commission. Yeah, I think so.
Well, maybe, maybe Mr. Tom Alensi's first reappointment, does this come?
To change the name.
They want to be a committee or commission or a board.
Mr. President, can I quick, does any, is there any limit in any of these groups to how many times you can serve?
There's none by charter. Our, our policy, when there's more than one applicant, tends to disfavor, does disfavor, I forget, I think it's 12 years or three terms or something like that. But since he's the only applicant. And I think we're going to proceed to vote. Is that good? All those in favor?
Yes, to waive our policy.
Well, that wasn't just the waiver, that was the approval, okay? Fair enough, okay. Is, good? Okay, Recreation Board appointment, Dana Coates, is Dana here?
She's right.
Do you want to come on up and? Sorry if I said your name. I haven't gotten a name right in six months.
Dana, this is a new appointment? No, this is a reappointment now that I'm looking at her.
Okay.
Because I just mentioned today, I think we see something from another recreation commission member who's unable to be reappointed.
Okay.
So when I saw it, it's just for a new appointment, I was going to let you know that.
Yeah, but isn't Dana a reappointment, isn't she on there now? Okay.
See, so the problem is, we're never going to let the bird take a vacation again.
I was looking at you, Dana, thinking, you've done this.
This is all my, this is all my, my doing.
It is a reappointment.
Well, it's good to have her, do you want to talk? How are things going on?
I'd just like to say that I've, I've witnessed Dana with the recreation committee and she's been a very valuable asset to that recreation committee, and I think we definitely should reappoint her.
The question is, can the, with the, with the, from our open meetings law perspective, since it says new appointment, should we air on this?
No, I think it's fine. It's a, it's a typo, isn't it?
I wouldn't hesitate to vote on that.
Okay.
We'll ratify if we feel the need.
And there's yet another vacancy?
Yes, there's some.
Okay, is there anybody here that has an objection to proceeding? Is there anybody here from the public that came to speak on this item? Alright, may we have a motion to reappoint?
Still moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Poor Dana.
We are on to general business. Number one I'm very excited about is to ratify the firefighter contracts. That would be from July of 2018 to June of 2019 and related July of 2019 to June of 2022. This had a fairly extensive discussion and presentation. Our assistant solicitor for labor is present if there are any other questions. We left the documents posted for much longer than the three days required, so the floor is open as well from the public for any questions or comments. And are there anything further to add from the administrator or labor company?
There's a little bit of an update on the exhibits that need to be added to the agreement. Some have been added, the rest have been worked out, but they're not yet, you know, they weren't posted with the document that they will be, they have been agreed to and everything else, but Tim is the best one who can explain.
So the, so can we vote on this if we don't have these exhibits?
Yes, you have the, so the, just to add a little context to that, the tentative agreements have been ratified by the union membership. Those have all been presented to the council and you've had them for quite some time. That there will be two collective bargaining agreements. Each collective bargaining agreement will have four exhibits. Exhibit A is a health insurance plan summary document. The health insurance plan summary hasn't changed, but that document changes slightly year to year. That exhibit A is created every year and is attached to the contract. So that's one of the exhibits that, just as a matter of the fact that it is subject to slight changes every year, could change with the contract, but it's the same health plan, so that's exhibit A. And in the packet that we had given you, it was just a notation, health insurance plan summary document. Exhibit B is the meet and confer MOA, you have that. Exhibit C is the shift schedule and minimum staffing MOA, which you also have. So you have three, the three exhibits, A, B, and C. We had discussed, and the solicitor asked a question when we presented this last time. Exhibit C also has an exhibit B attached to it, and that is simply the schedule. And the schedule will kick in, it's a 48-hour, four-platoon schedule. This has been worked out for, I would say, over a year. This is, we know what the schedule is. But to avoid confusion and have an exhibit B attached to an exhibit C, we've, we've decided just to make that actual schedule document exhibit D to both contracts. So.
Okay.
So you have everything, everything's been agreed to in the tentative agreement and in the packet that we've given to you. It's just, that document is no longer exhibit C. Exhibit B to exhibit C, that will be a new exhibit D to both collective bargaining agreements, which won't kick in until the 28th person, the 28th person is hired. Not 28 additional people are being hired, until the 28th line firefighter is.
Right, because we don't have full staffing right now. Is there a, never mind, I just answered my own question.
I mean, we have the, the exhibit A that gets attached, it's been distributed to the union. If you wanted to see it, it's a six-page document, but this, this, if it gets updated from year to year from Blue Cross, that exhibit updates with the contract every year as well.
Tim, is that, is that exhibit posted with the current contract that's online?
It's, it's exhibit A.
To the current contract?
To the current contract.
That the town has?
Yeah, and it's noted as the health insurance plan summary document and the.
So if someone were to, were to wonder what exhibit A was, they would be able to reference the existing contract and see essentially the same document, substantially the same document?
No, it's the, it's the.
No, I, that's what I'm saying, now, all these exhibits online for the public, because that's, that's what needs to be done, I think.
The only document that is not is the, it's, it's the health insurance plan summary document, which is the same health insurance plan summary document that was attached to the prior contract that will be attached to all of the contract. This document changes from year to year with the contract. So there was a notation to that document as exhibit A in the attached packet.
What I'm asking, Tim, is that, that exhibit A in a prior contract, there was also an exhibit A in that document was attached to it, I assume?
It's in the pri, it's, it's been attached to the contracts since the.
And since the town makes, makes a habit of publishing those contracts, that somebody could have gone online to see what that looks like in the current contract, and it's essentially the same contract that we're approving.
It's the same health insurance.
The same health insurance plan document.
I think in effect since the town put that plan in place.
Okay. My, my only concern, you understand, my only concern is that if somebody wanted to see what exhibit A was in full, I want to make sure that it was available somewhere online on the town's website during this review period. And, and so I'm assuming that it was with the posted, existing posted contract.
How about exhibit B, C, and D, has that been online?
Exhibit B and C have been online.
But D hasn't, the schedule for the 48 hours and four platoons, that wasn't online?
The schedule is.
No, I'm just saying you had exhibit D. No, I'm just saying you had exhibit D.
Is discussed in the document, but it was exhibit B to exhibit C, and now that is exhibit D.
So all of these are online for people to see?
The...
What's advertised?
The actual exhibit D is spelled out in writing in terms of what the schedule is. The, putting that written document into the exhibit B, into the exhibit D, is a formality that happens after the fact. If there was, if there was a question about it, Mr. Solicitor, what I would say is, in ratifying the contract, authorize the, or in voting to ratify the contract, authorize the town administrator to formalize the exhibit D that the parties have agreed to and attach that to the collective bargaining agreement.
I'm less concerned about that one. The substance is what we've had posted, and I appreciate the cleanup that will set that up as a new exhibit D. I don't think the pagination or enumeration or anything like that is going to hold us up. I just want to make sure that somewhere online, we've got a copy of the health, of the exhibit A.
Yeah, and the exhibit A is also spelled out in the collective bargaining agreement and in the tentative agreement. So it's a high deductible health plan, 2,000, 4,000, with an HSA. It's been the same health plan that's been in place for at least eight, nine years now. And the summary plan description is really just a member benefit piece that members can look at and see exactly what their deductible applies to and doesn't apply to.
As you can see, we take our exhibits very seriously here.
Well, only because it has to...
All of it is on, has been posted online. We may have changed a B to a D, but it's all there. Fair enough?
Just, does anybody happen to know the citation for the law that requires the posting? I'm just curious.
It's, I actually have it written here.
Nancy, you?
I do. No, but I have the citation as well. I believe it's 407 subsection 13 of the town charter.
It's in the charter.
407 is the town council's authority. And the entire contents of the collective bargaining agreement, I don't have the charter provision in front of me, but what the charter provision says is that the tentative agreement is what is posted online for three days. And at that point, that is what is ratified. The tentative agreement has been posted for more than three days. And the second part, after the vote, is technically on the tentative agreement. When the council ratifies the tentative agreement, the tentative agreement becomes the collective bargaining agreement, and the collective bargaining agreement is then put in place or drafted through the contents of the tentative agreement. You have had the benefit of having both the tentative agreement and the fully integrated collective bargaining agreement in your hands for quite some time now. Was that the right citation, Mr. Vice President?
So this is the, at least the third open session that this has been brought up. Again, this is a four-year contract, and we had extensive discussion, a one plus a three. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. I would like to see a motion to approve as presented. Still moved?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from the floor? And I'd like to reiterate a conversation from the last to our town administrator, who serves as our chief negotiator, the labor council supporting and all the others on the team supporting counselors. This is, as I said before, good for the town, good for the taxpayers, and good for the firefighters. All those in favor? Very well, thank you. Next up will be very brief. We've talked a few times about a, and that's police and fire. Two down, two to go. We have closed session minutes. Here's the proposal. I propose, we always hold on to the fifth, when a month like April, we have five Mondays, which suggests that we hold this item for next week, for a special meeting on Monday, April 29, in which we can talk more about this. And I'd like to suggest that we talk, we start with litigation matters only. As we think about releasing closed minutes from matters which have closed in the past, we'll, I think we should think about them in categories, starting with litigation. Think about collective bargaining or perhaps personnel matters later. That's basically all I have to say. Make sure there's no objection to holding a meeting on the 29th.
I won't be able to make it.
Can't make the 29th?
Why can't we just do it directly scheduled on May 6?
I would suggest the second meeting in May.
Yeah, I just can't make it. I have to work.
I can't.
Okay, so nobody wants to have a meeting on the 29th? Is that...
No.
I can make it.
You won't be attending it, and that's important.
Yeah, I just understood our practice was to always hold that fifth Monday, so I didn't mean to, I just assumed that everybody would want to...
Yeah, I just apologize every once in a while, they'll stick a call in there, and I'm on call that night, so.
Well, we can, I don't know if it'll fit on the 6th, that depends on the agenda request, but if you want to just leave it open, it's fine.
I'd like it to go towards the second meeting in May.
Okay.
You're busy. So that would be May 28th. That would be after Memorial. That'd be the 28th, because the 27th is Memorial Day.
It's a Tuesday. Everybody's good for that Tuesday?
May 28th is going to?
The solicitor and I a chance to busy some of this out.
May 28th, Dana.
May 28th. Tuesday after Memorial.
That would give us a chance to work out the mechanics of how we would even do this.
Sure. Well, I just wanted to know if we're going to have a meeting on the 29th at all? Because if we're going to have a meeting, I'd like at least...
I think that was just opening case we needed to put something there, but...
All right. I'm not hearing a lot of clamoring for one. All right, so let's not do that. Okay? All right, very well. All right, so that handles item 10B, no action taken. Counselors Cook and Driggs, a brief update, no voting on the employee code of conduct.
So, basically, Donna and I met with Gio, and he's going to be working on some language for us to look at, the town council to look at and to consider for a code of conduct to be put in writing. And we don't have that language yet, but some of the issues that we explored were, we were pretty clear that we would want whatever code of conduct language we put in contracts, that they would have, the language would have to be there at the time of hiring, and the policy would be displayed in any contract renewal. The employee at the time of hiring and also signing a new contract would have to agree that he's read this proposal. Gio brought examples from Providence, from New Jersey, from Maryland, different kinds of language. And one of the things that he's going to be looking at and sort of digesting is whether you have to think about things like benefits, whether you want it to be proportional, or if the employee is released for dishonorable service, for instance, does he get anything or does he get some of it? It's that kind of stuff. So it's obviously not ready for a full discussion, and we just wanted to let you know that this is under discussion.
Okay, so you'll let us know whenever you want some agenda time, and we'll...
Yep.
Jan, it's him. Oh, okay. That's okay. That's all right. He was making some kind of motion he needed to talk to them.
Is that his motion?
What's that? There was no...
Could I ask that we go back to the contract briefly? Attorney Cavazza just made a good point that we neglected to include the specific approval for the administrator and the council president to finalize and execute that contract. And so if we could just append that vote, I think that would be properly more thorough.
Okay, let's see, whose motion was that?
I second it, and that was fine.
And please, it was your second.
That's fine.
Agreed? Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
We were expecting something one quarter minute.
Yeah, I didn't know what was going on.
Just want to make sure I'll let ducks are in a row.
Okay, so that was a brief update. Thank you. And you'll let us know when you want more agenda time. Did you want to add anything to the code of conduct?
No, only that we have the great benefit of Providence having passed an ordinance, which was then rejected by the Rhode Island Supreme Court. So it turns out that there's really good background already here on this, and I will be sending over that draft with Attorney Cavazza as well for his review.
So we won't follow the form of the ordinance?
Well, no, no, the new one, they've re-adopted now one that has passed muster. So we have the bad one and the good one to look at to make sure we get it right.
Perfect, okay. Very well. So 10D, Madam Clerk, the May 2019 financial town referendum, any general updates?
So I've been away last week, but we're still having the FTR on May 18. There's a hearing on May 2 at the high school at 7:00 PM. There will be a Board of Canvas meeting this Thursday and Friday. I believe Thursday's at 5:30, and Friday's is at 3 o'clock, I think.
This Thursday at 5:30?
This Thursday at 5:30, there will be a meeting where the Board of Canvas will be certifying signatures on a petitioner's budget, and they will be certifying the wording for the ballot, so that we can get it up to the state to prepare the ballot. So I have sent all the resolutions, and the solicitor is reviewing what he has to. He will be attending that meeting, as we always have the solicitors attend that meeting. And other than that, till those meetings are completed and the Board of Canvas certifies the wording, we'll send it to, immediately send it to the state, and we hopefully will have a proof of a ballot that we can use for the hearing. That's all I really have on that. We've passed the point where if you are not a registered voter at this point, you cannot, will not be able to vote at the FTR. We had April 18, I believe it was, was the final day for registration.
Mr. President, I just want to add briefly to that. I have received everything from Nancy. I just want to make the council aware that there does seem to be a defect in the one petition for an alternative budget. The math doesn't add up on that. And so I'm not, I'm still digging into it. I'm not sure what that means come Thursday, but I just thought the council should be aware that there seems to be a procedural defect in the one alternate petition. The numbers just don't add up to the total tax levy.
This is the elector petition?
Just on the petition, not a resolution?
And Nancy sent that to you?
I have copies of the resolution, the petition resolution, yes. Nancy sent, I don't know if Nancy sent, somebody from Nancy's office sent.
Okay, that's the FTR. I just wanted to check, did we have any guests on item J, which is the National Grid Verizon petition? I think the town administrator is going to take this from here. Okay, all right, we'll stick with the regular order. Okay, items E, F, G, H, I, J. Did you know K? Over to you, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. This is the, finally, the engineering services agreement that I recommend you approve with Steer Engineering. It's essentially the same agreement we've had over the last several years. We did go out to, with the new request for proposals, we had three responses. One was not really responsive because it was more type of engineering services that you want. We have a really big construction project rather than an on-call services type of contract. The other two were from par engineering and steer engineering. They were both very well done, very responsive, and clearly indicated that both firms are more than qualified to do the work for the town. There was a little wrinkle in the process because we were told that we are subject to what is called qualification-based selection, which means that initially you're only supposed to ask for qualifications without any indication of what the cost might be. So we sent out an addendum, and we met that requirement, and then I had to figure out how I could start talking with either one or both of them on what the cost would be. So that took a little while to figure out. So I did, ultimately, I was able to compare fee schedules. Steer Engineering is slightly cheaper. Unfortunately, I didn't get the final contract until this morning because since the contract had changed a little bit due to a new scope of services, their lawyers felt, or someone over there felt that their lawyers had to review it. Their lawyers reviewed it. They required something else to be put in it. They sent it to me this morning. I said, you have to take it out. They took it out, and here we are. We now have a final version, but it took that long, and I apologize because I know you want to see these things earlier. I will say, however, that the form of the contract is exactly the same as what we have used in the past, as well as the same agreement, form of agreement that we used when you approved the extension earlier this year for steer engineering. The only difference is the scope of work, and the scope of work is taken directly from the approved request for proposals that we issued. Attached, I do have extra copies here in case you want to take a look at it. At the very end of it, there is the fee schedule. If there are any questions, certainly compared to where we were three years ago, the price is going to go up. However, I do want to say that steer engineering has offered to try and help keep costs down to some extent that requires, you know, close collaboration between steer and the various parts of the town that they're working with. For example, if they get materials for a meeting in a timely fashion, they can assign it to a lower-ranked employee at a lower rate than when they only have one day to process it, and then it needs to be done by the top person. So they're going to work on that. We need to work on it with them. I also asked them about that fee for attending meetings, because the initial proposal was to make that 500 lumps on payment for each and every meeting that they attend. And they agreed that, now, if in fact they're only here three hours and the hourly rate comes to a lower amount, it will be the lower amount. So there's a fair amount of desire to keep it down. They're even going to bring an engineer to the planning board and zoning board meeting just to bring them up to speed and no cost to the town, so that in the future, it doesn't always have to be the senior project manager who has to attend the meetings. So with that, we know that steer engineering has been serving the town well. Par engineering is serving the town already with respect to the landfill, and I think it's probably helpful to have separate firms anyway. But given also that the fees are, on balance, slightly lower, I would recommend that you approve this contract.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the town administrator. It will be the motion to approve as presented. Okay, hearing, no motion. The floor is open for discussion.
I'll make a motion, although, and I appreciate the, not having the contract, but given the circumstances and that the planning board needing these services, I'll make a motion to approve this steer contract.
Second.
We have a motion, second. The floor is open for questions and comments. Tom?
Three years. Sorry, I should have said that. I think I had something in the packet on this, if I'm not mistaken.
There is.
So each adjustment every year is 3%?
Correct. And actually, both proposals had the same annual increase.
So 3% every year is compounded. Does it actually come to 12% increase in three years? Does it compounds?
Yeah, theoretically, yes.
I don't know, that's a big increase.
There's no guarantee. It's still by the hour.
Excuse me?
It's still by the hour, though.
It's still by the hour.
You can maintain a budget even if the hourly rate is higher.
You can maintain your budget even if the hourly rate is higher.
And you have a 20-day termination provision if it gets out of hand?
And I will say, it's, you know, I've been looking at other contracts. This is what you see these days in these kinds of contracts. And the services are not cheap, and the increases are not, you know, insignificant.
I have one question, I just, I wasn't sure I was understanding. When they attend meetings, you had something about by allocating cost to applicants?
Correct, and that's another discussion I had with steer engineering, they fully agree with that. So most of these services, we should actually emphasize that, these are not services that most of the time the town actually ends up paying for. It comes out of escrow accounts established for projects that go through plan review, et cetera, et cetera. We haven't really had a situation where that we have been charged for the attendance at meetings, because initially they agreed to do it without charge. They are not willing to continue that practice. When we have meetings where multiple applicants and multiple projects are on the agenda, there hasn't been a history of allocating that time to the different projects, so that actually we could get, we could recoup some of the cost, you know, from the applicants. And I think, steer engineering thinks, and I've talked about it with the planning board chair as well, that we should at least try, within reason, to allocate it to applicants if in fact the reason that the consulting engineer is there at that meeting is in part because of their project. So there's going to be some process worked out by which we can, on an early basis, determine, you know, whether we're going to allocate some of the costs to applicants rather than it just being sent to the treasurer's office. It also means, by the way, trying to manage time a little bit, because sometimes these meetings go on for a long time, and if it's not necessary for the consulting engineer to be there the entire time, to the extent that can be managed, that could help us save a little bit.
Thank you.
Would anybody from the public like to be heard on this matter? Okay, any other questions or comments from councils?
Mr. President, could I just ask Councilor Hilton to amend her motion to include authorization for you to sign this contract, as you are the designated signer on the form in front of us?
So amended. Second.
I deem that inherent vote, but move any doubt, it's very well.
I want to make sure I is have dotted.
Any objections to seeing a vote? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Okay, what's next? Just so you know, I don't know if it'll work out this way, but it's my intent, or at least those of us on the agenda planning team, if there's transfers that are less than $10,000, we might put them on the consent agenda, but these are all, at least involve over $10,000, except for one, but since we already had three on there, we might just put the one more on there. So I don't know how much time we want to spend on all these, but there's a variety of account transfers, which is fairly common as we, you know, march into the fourth quarter of fiscal year, and I don't know how much, do you want to talk to all of them, or?
Well, I'll just briefly go through them if you don't mind. So the first one is to cover a shortage in the overtime account. The transfer will come out of three different accounts, each $10,000, for a total of $30,000 to go into the overtime account. You want me to run through all of them, or?
Do you want to hear about all of them, and then take one vote, or you want to take them as they come here? Anybody?
Let's just take them as they come.
Let's do it, okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the transfer of $30,000 to account 3310-5104, from account 3310-5108 longevity, account 3310-5104 holidays, and account 3310-5111 EMS incentive. All of those are $10,000 each.
Second, but I do have one discussion question, if that's okay. I know how short we are of firefighters right now, and obviously, the overtime account is taking a big hit. Do we have an estimate of what the overtime might look like from now to the end of the year, and how we cover it?
This is meant to cover that.
You think this will cover it all the way through?
That's the idea, and I think it will work for this particular one. The next one is probably somewhat different based on information I received today.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, next.
Thank you, the next one is transfer, again, from three accounts in different amounts, all to the apparatus maintenance account, where we keep incurring more and more expenses to get apparatus and rescue vehicles repaired. This was the estimate, what we would need, but we heard today that rescue, I forget, no, one of them is going to take $12,000 more to fix, on top of the $10,000 that had already been spent on it. So we're going through a time of unanticipated, very expensive repairs that we cannot afford not to do, but we're getting to the point that I actually today had to say, gee, maybe we should try to get two new trucks instead of one, which is not something I would easily say, and I'm not going to propose it this time, but, you know, we're talking about getting a new truck in the neighborhood of $39,000, $340, where was it? $239,000, and now we're spending, you know, serious amounts on these trucks. But anyway, for the time being, we think we have no choice to go ahead. The bottom line of that is that this particular transfer is probably not going to be enough to cover that latest increase as well. So there may need to be more, but for the time being, this is the request, total of $25,000 into the apparatus maintenance account, still from within the fire department budget.
Now which truck is this? I'm sorry if I missed it, the 2016? Are we repairing?
No, it's not the 2016.
It would be the 2012, okay. Are they, I know that they've had a hard time figuring out exactly what this truck needs for a long time. Are they at the end of their evaluation of what it needs, or are there still more things for them to go through?
As far as I know, they've been through everything. I've seen the reports from the place in Fall River that does this, it's been pretty exhaustive.
Yeah.
And, you know, they actually thought they had everything, and then they found more, but I get the sense from this, this is what it will take to get it back on the road.
Right, and the idea is eventually, once we get the new truck, this truck will become the reserve?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
In that case, I'll make a motion to transfer $25,000 to account 3310-7640 Apparatus Maintenance, from accounts 3310-5100, 3310-7611, 3310-7840. Second.
Would anybody like to be heard from the public? All those in favor? Okay, next.
Next is a transfer in the amount of $30,800 from the health insurance retired account to the account for, account number, well, you'll do the numbers, account for salary for building official. This is a continuation of the situation that we've had, where we have the interim arrangement with municipal code consulting. Actually, the workload has increased significantly, in particular, the demand for plan review. There is quite a bit more development going on right now, and I'm astounded at the rate at which we see these invoices coming in. Now, every time we get an invoice, we also start, you know, charge fees, so I'm trying to come up with the data so that we can show that we actually cover this cost, but nonetheless, we need to pay municipal code consulting, and it's more than the budget anticipated.
May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the transfer of $30,800 from account 2190-5269, health insurance retired, to account 1140-5101, salary building official.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor, approve is recommended.
Thank you. Next is a transfer to cover expenses related to computer services in, I believe, it's in the town administrator's account, and it's still part of some of the extra work that was required in the wake of the overhaul in police and fire, but also more recently with the computer problems we had in the town clerk's office that depleted the account, and we are in the red currently. This is meant to cover the rest of the year, hopefully, if we don't have any other breakdowns.
Is less than $10,000, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve to transfer $6,250 from account 2190-5268, health insurance active, to account 1120-7590, computer services.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the public? Any further comments?
So I just want to, this, in the statement on this, it says, this hadn't been planned to be done until the next fiscal year, so presumably this will, am I looking at the right thing here? We migrated the clerk's office to cloud-based computing. We had not planned on doing additional migration until the new fiscal year, but decided that doing now was most effective way to go.
Okay, you're referring to the document you had in your packet. That's correct. So in the town clerk's office, we had a breakdown of a server, sort of a key piece of equipment, and looking at what needed to be done, and where the instability was in the system. It just didn't make sense to keep using the same computer network platform in that office if we replaced the server, but to just use the opportunity to migrate to the Office 365 platform. So we went ahead to do that. It will save us next year a little bit, and it has stabilized the situation in the clerk's office, just as it was, as you would expect it to do. But yeah, it was an unanticipatedly early expense on that part. And by the way, I just want to, I have to add this. Every time we do these, and especially when we have a series like this with pretty significant amounts, it doesn't feel right. There's something with the way we do budgeting, and, you know, try how we may to manage it, there ought to be a better way, I think, to do the budgeting. I don't know what the solution is, I just want to share my frustration with it. I feel responsible for, you know, coming up with that solution as well. I just have to say that.
Better way to transfer funds, or have funds available for emergencies, or?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, come halfway through the year, if you have to start moving massive amounts of money around, there's something that's not, what's wrong with the budget, that you have to do that, is basically my question is. But that's off the reservation.
Twenty million dollar budget, so in a percentage terms, I think, might be being too hard on yourself, but, and you're apparently finding savings from elsewhere. Now, when you don't have anywhere to transfer from, what really happens?
But your point is well taken. I think we need a vote on that.
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, okay. All those in favor? All right. Got a very good batting average tonight. Do we have a sponsor on the joint poll petitions? Is that DPW, or who owns that one?
These come in routinely, and usually, if it's new polls for a subdivision or something like that, we bill them so many months, so many years, three years of electric, but I'm not quite sure where this one comes from. It's for Lake Road. I don't know who requested this one, but they do on occasion put it, the town has to approve in order to, for them to put anything on town property. And so we get these a few times throughout the year. Generally, we put them under consent agenda.
It's both National Grid and Verizon.
It's a joint poll, yeah.
What do you mean by who requested it?
Well, usually, the town requests the poll for something, either it's a new subdivision or something like that.
Oh, I see, I just.
Yeah, who requested it?
Gotcha.
Well, it doesn't tell me on this who requested.
My limited experience with this, but looking at the plan, my guess is that you've got a pole that's leaning because of the perpendicular wires that come off to the east. It's probably pulling in that direction. This doesn't seem to have any new lines on it, it's just to shore up that pole and keep it straight. So it's really just to support the pole it connects to. It's only a guy wire, it's not actually running a transmission line across.
Oh, yeah, anchor and guy wire.
We're talking about near the intersection of Lake Road and Jaclyn Way, a bit north of that intersection. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? It strikes me as routine.
It is.
All right, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. We will hit the home stretch here with other items, announcements, and comments. We'll start with the town administrator, with two specific items, and then any, we had no other.
No, we already did that.
I think we held the minutes for the next meeting.
Did you, did you do the update on the fire rescue purchase?
That's what we're doing now.
Coming up next, you got it.
Fire rescue purchase, we got three bids, and one was actually slightly lower than the price we had been given for the demo model. So we're currently looking and comparing them to make sure that the lower bid is as responsive and includes everything that the other bids include, in which case, we will propose to go with that lower bid.
Is there a time lag on that versus the demo model?
Excuse me?
Is there a time lag to get that one, because it's not a demo model?
Well, this is the other thing we're looking at. I know one of them, I actually think it was the most, most expensive price, the highest price, was also a higher delivery date, if I'm not mistaken. So we're finalizing that as well, because if the demo model were to be the shorter delivery date, I think that would, in this case, outweigh, you know, the slight difference in the price, but I don't think that's the case.
Okay, so if, for example, this one isn't readily available, you would go with the?
Yeah.
And do you have a?
Correct.
Do you have some kind of timeline on making that decision, and?
Well, they, yes, we're going to be, we're going to do that this week, if at all possible. Bruce took a look at them today, but, and he's not here because he was just really very exhausted, but he's going to continue to compare them tomorrow. We should have, you know, a decision, or at least a conclusion as to what we would recommend to the council. Unfortunately, we didn't have it ready for tonight, but it also wasn't posted necessarily for, you know, a vote to, or approval to award the bid.
I thought our motion authorized you to just go ahead.
Okay, we'll do that.
I thought it did. Double check if my impressions.
Well, we can take another vote, too. That's kind of was my next question. Can we delegate this responsibility, so that, especially if we're not meeting next Monday, as I thought we were? Because I thought it was all of us were well-intended to, and my understanding is that there is no budget proposal which does not fund the rescues, so we should be able to proceed to...
I think my only concern was and remains the timing of the payment, but I assume that can be addressed in the contract that the administrator approves.
I think that the last meeting, I asked if someone might speak with the treasurer about how that can be done. Has that happened yet? Has that happened yet? I think that was my request, actually.
Would you like me to do that?
Or in the town administrator, because I think there's a way to do that, and I'm relatively sure the treasurer knows how.
I remember you asking that. I don't remember who exactly was supposed to do it, but I'll be glad to follow up with her as well. She knows it's coming.
Right.
We need to figure it out.
Okay, so I'm going to call a special meeting unless you tell me that we can give you the authority to make this happen now.
If you want to have a meeting next Monday and I'm not, if I don't get called in, I'll come, I mean, don't cancel it because of me. I just don't know if I can make it.
I just want to know we're all on the same page.
I can't necessarily tell you that because I don't have the, I mean, I'd like to see the agreement and compare that to the vote that you took, but I believe you've taken an authorizing vote that was broad enough to cover what the administrator has just described. If it's comforting to add a ratifying vote as well at a future meeting, we could do that, but I don't think a special meeting is going to make a legal difference at this point.
I moved add a footnote that says, "We really mean it." So I guess the upside is if it's not, if the prior vote is not adequate, you let us know, and if need be, we can call a special emergency, whatever meeting we need to get it done.
But I do not expect that is necessary.
Can we, can we get a memo, maybe 24 hours notice, sent out to all of us, just in case somebody has a concern?
Prior to the execution of the contract?
Before you actually bind, is that fair? Like a one-way? Councilor, did you have something to add?
I did think that we had, under the circumstances, allowed the town administrator go for it, and my only request would be, given that this is a bidding situation, that if for some reason the low bidder isn't necessarily the most qualified bidder, which could be the case, that we're just, that we're clear on the reasoning for that so that we don't end up with somebody suing us because they might have been the low bidder, but based on delivery time, they're not the most qualified bidder.
That's why we're going through it with a fine-tooth comb.
Fine-tooth comb.
Okay, we're getting there. Our deductible is going up.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm reading?
And I thought you should know that because it's a very significant increase. It's an interesting issue at the same time.
Yeah, that's interesting.
The reason is, to be accredited or not, is the question. So the trust is beginning to differentiate between those towns that, where the police departments do have accreditation and those who don't, and has felt it necessary to significantly increase the per occurrence deductible from 2,500 to 50,000 per occurrence. And we just received that notice, but I thought you would want to know. I do think the good news is that, as you know, we're now working affirmatively towards accreditation, and even as part of the negotiations with the police union, you know, got their commitment to work that both the union and management will be working together to expedite it as much as possible, and this will be one of the benefits.
That's a huge difference.
It is.
Again, the, because we, in our new police contract, we're now working for an accreditation of the department. That, I guess, will take some time, but we are, should be able to remedy this in due course. Okay, general announcements, if you have any others? Administrator, then clerk, then solicitor, and then the rest of us.
Nancy, I have a question during your town clerk announcements.
Okay.
No, I don't.
No, he said no.
Okay, I have two, can I just do, I have two quick ones here. Tivon and Litter Cleanup Week is Saturday, April 27th through Saturday, May 4th. It kicks off at Grinnell's Beach at 9:00 a.m., and bags and gloves will be provided. So these posters are, we'll make sure they're put on the website. Is it already on the website?
I saw it, I think.
And we'll post one up here for anyone.
Where are they, Dick? I'm sorry.
The kickoff is at Grinnell's Beach at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 27th.
Okay.
And usually the DPW provides gloves and bags.
It's April 27th, right?
It's April 27th through Saturday, May 4th.
Yep.
And then I did receive, while I was away on April 20th, a resignation from the Tivon Budget Committee member, chairman, actually, Jeff Karen. It was effective a Saturday at noon on April 20th. So I may, I raise this because you may want me to put at the next meeting, the appointment of a budget committee person.
Nancy, could you go over the Board of Canvas' meetings? They're Thursday at 5:30?
Thursday here at 5:30. The agenda has been posted.
And how about Friday? Is it at 2:00 or is it at 3:00?
The Friday one, it's actually been advertised, that is to certify the final canvassing role
Yep.
and the actual ballot, but the certification of everything will happen.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay.
And then on Friday, because that is a pre-scheduled time, has to be within certain days for us to be able to certify the new voting canvas.
I thought you said 3, but I think it's 2.
We have any, yeah, that one was by advertised. I want to say it was at 2:30, is that what?
Oh, it's some, yeah, maybe.
It would be on the website as well.
Okay, be on the website, okay.
And I'll make sure it's on there, but I'm pretty sure it is on there.
Okay, thank you.
And then after that date, we will put anything we have, including the proposed ballots, as soon as we get it approved from the Board of the state, and we will put everything we have for documentation up on the website as well.
Mr. Solicitor?
I don't have anything specific to report, other than to let you know that we will do a full litigation review to summarize the activity of the first quarter, and then do that on an ongoing basis each quarter, as was, I believe, Solicitor DeSisto's practice. And so I should have that first litigation summary in the next two weeks or so. I've just been working with the trust to sort of coordinate how I get the information from them to integrate into the report, and that should be available either the next meeting or the next following meeting.
Okay, the floor is open. Any other announcements or items from councilor? All right.
I just wanted to point out that it's not 9 o'clock, but almost done. We ran a really tight ship.
Squeaky!
Not a lot of squeaky boards.
All right, well, with that note, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move, so moved.